Uh, this is the meeting, uh, September 18th. I'm just asking somebody if we have enough power up here to declare a pardon. So, we can do that on the agenda, we can do that in your area. But we're glad you got it here, I hope you all had a nice day today. Lovely day, maybe you better come home. If you would rather, if you can stand, then we'll have a prayer and then follow by. You guys, please. Father, our joy comes from a decent trust that God is in control of everything that concern him. May you walk through your death with every deed you have as you had been told. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Lord who has granted us the good hour. Okay, going to our next, I wanted to hear the comments, you wanted to spell out one. To speak to the Council on Marriage, so, to Bill. Uh, Greg, do you have a thought?
The, uh, trash cans, I believe, are ordinance that you can move through the street. People don't do that, but also playing with. But they have some to get around trash cans. They should be doing something about it. The tankers are really fraught. Which I think will go into action. Where things do anything now. I love, I love living here. We'll get back to enforcement of rules for regulations.
Okay, we'll, we'll pass that on. Um, every day down there, since I drive a car, it's a mixed, you know, we kind of overlook things like that sometimes, right? Experience, living in a gray area, and I worry about your local parents and stuff, so. We appreciate that, I noticed you here, you're a little covered about it, and if we could have gone by, off of people, so. We'll do the same then. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I was wondering, what do you mean by rock and roll?
Very much.
Uh, receptive, oh, the, uh, I watch.
The order.
Oh, okay. Went from trash can to the other, so I lost, I don't know.
One more, there is an ordinance, I believe, everyday ordinance.
For a lot of down the street, I've been there for about three months.
Yeah. That's several, several people, yeah, so, I've got your vision on today. Thank you for your efforts. From our minutes, council, we want to have the additions, corrections, resolutions. And by the way, our performance, so I demand motion to be approved. Also, okay. Vocal.
Melody.
Yay.
Sean.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Sunny.
Next one, the agenda, consideration of Resolution 918. Okay. On the plan, uh, on the agenda, is anybody? Anything that you're sure? Uh, by your way. That's secondly, okay.
Melody. Which one do we? Oh, thank you. Yay.
Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Sunny.
Yay.
We have a worst out turn.
Well, it's not, it's got the text that, uh, he's working at the scout store, second or third day, and he's working late for that.
Kevin, we're so, we're so glad that he was gonna come and say this, that we're gonna wait for him.
Well, we'll return, we'll wait there.
This, can we, let's move on to, uh, we did the minutes about plans. If you'd like, let's keep going, Resolution number 918. Regarding regarding the appointment of Jerry Crook, the reed, the plumber, the plan, on a commission for the term, are June 2026 or June 2099? Your one best strategy. That was part of it. It's two by two. Okay, if we have any conversation? Three, three Michael Solos are pretty good, we know them all. And two of the three have been out of jail for, there you go. So remember the thirty days, or how much you have left? Uh, I'll make a motion to approve. That's secondly.
Melody. Um, and I, I mean, I have a question.
Sure.
Um. Because, what, the resolution is regarding appointment of these persons?
Yes, Jerry Crook and the reed.
So this is a new term, or some?
It, they, so your plan is only real like three years, within three year terms. One year there's three, one year there's two, third, so that's bad. So the six of these three old, they're expired, actually, they expired June, they're coming six, but I didn't know that until the box. But they serve until the successor, of course. Yeah, I think all of them have been, uh, have been on the plan, we report laws, and they've been on the account anyway.
And if you don't agree to all three, it just doesn't make sense.
That was a motion, that was a motion, right? Change of order, for the majority.
Yeah, I, I, I prefer.
Should I present my motion?
And.
Oh, the next thing, okay. Okay, next second. We do that. Can you find, talk to Dave about? Okay, so we want to have consideration in the Resolution 918. The document, city, the policy, they all mentioned period.
We don't prepare in detail, but just, uh, basically captured already, management policy, uh, retention records, which we haven't had in the past, so it's safe. Uh, and then we started the files with the open records act. We got schedule listed, pursuant to Title 51, sections twenty four, one, one, I think, twenty four, thirty, thirty three, if they're on. Um, and by community divisions or research fee, and search fee only applies to requests for a purpose or clearly caused excessive fraud sheet. So getting members that want to get a copy, and also the monitor we have online, and most of the cameras, the new website, or using new management, so everything will be online. Open records, not a lot simpler. As far as, you know, for example, what, uh, we crack, we need the one as well. When, every type of record that we had, if there's a fundamental citation, I did, and how much time, or how long. So this regular things, or communication thing, uh, gotta be a lot credited, uh, chamber. Make sure it's followed for our background, uh, and, uh, we're more, nickel steel standard, and we're heading bad, so if it's certain scratch, that's a good reference. And work for us, and city attorneys, as well.
Do we miss anything?
Um, there are a few factations we don't think. Most of them are probably.
Discussion.
I, I, I actually, I could talk to David about it three times, you know. The, I was at the city government's meeting, where they were talking about outside people going in the meeting. Or something, or God, to sue, to sue you over, and that's, you didn't listen to that.
Any thought about that?
Yeah, well, they just go, like, just kick your big barrel, which is hard, which is, yeah.
All right, they'll move on, if you don't try.
I bet it is, sorry.
Uh, I might want to, for, 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 for. Second, that.
My son is a bachelor.
Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Sunny.
Yay.
Question. What was talking about, so this, dear, dear, our, our Resolution 918? How's it? Is that?
That's pretty sick. Uh, seven days off for vacation, and then came back, and I don't know, and stuff, I wonder if she's over there. She might have done. Get back in on some.
City government.
Thank you.
Sorry. It's okay. Let's look at Resolution 918, three regarding grid inspection, responsible. With natural grid inspection standards. They are. Three thousand nine hundred.
So what our choices are, is to decide whether to use one of ODOT's pre-qualified firms, elect to do the inspections ourselves, or forces. An inspection team that we have to pay for, use the same from the county, or let it go in our extension. And based on cabinet layer recommendations, we'd like to use a self-employed, but.
Well, I think that's everyone's, very, 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 very. I'm really glad. My motion. Second, our. Vocal.
Melody.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 918.
Look at me. Nine years and I'm under, that's a bit more rap.
Vocal.
Melody.
Yay.
Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Sunny.
All right. July number eight, consideration of Resolution 918, 23D, regarding acceptance of the Vassar Age project as completed, I will assume that.
Just a lot of things, so.
Put that down.
Yeah. That's my. We did that project, we won, we won six million dollars, uh, worth of investments, twelve million years, and it was definitely complete. And because this is our funding, I took the code of the project, and then when we catch.
Yeah.
Um, I'm finished with the, 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 and all this, so we, my orders, if you follow them, it's gotta be, like, the same way. Follow.
Correct. We'll continue to say zero complaints during, or after, uh, the project. I have. And it's the right. Just, remember, got that down, and it's, 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 it's. Well. Drainage has been on our minds for several years, so I, this is, this is, those are the, last, um, spring under, and so, all these wet, honey, on the street, and rain, get out of your car. It was bad. So anyway, I might want to, approve. Second. Vocal.
Melody.
Yay.
Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Sunny.
Yay.
Guys, we're moving pretty fast, I think we need to see all of that. Okay, so, uh, the memorandum of understanding with the, uh, substance of truths. For a, uh, what is that called? Clotus. Clotus, so, and. The light.
It's clots, it's, I don't know.
Close now. He's a desperate, he's a desperate vending machine, we don't get it, it's a little problem.
Yeah, we, uh, had. Oklahoma Department of Health and Substance Services reached out to us about harm reduction, that machine, and I don't know, I was reading fast on that, so I can show you. Uh, there are plenty of leagues in the communities across the state, it's safe places. Um, the, the three goes if the owner in the village, uh, the police department, some of the best, let's find that, and, uh, you know, certain libraries, even if the fire department, it's kind of less of a different safe space. So, uh, per the memorandum of understanding, Department of Health, Department of Health, Substance Services, they may take anything, stop it. Uh, we will have, probably, we have a money cost, and we're gonna put it out there, uh, running the ledgers on to it, so it's not just public, it's actually, of course. Running across the, each kit comes with the marking on it, and the markers. Uh, I think there's some location on there, someone can go by it all at once, but it is anonymous, and. Are we gonna, are we gonna have some classes, or something off, or, I know it seems pretty simply, she, she, uh, very, almost, uh. But I've actually, I haven't run her in a decade, but, just in case somebody drops near me.
This is just testers, this is not a marking.
Yes, it is. Instructions are provided on packaging, as well as online, and, okay. They, they have T R code. I'll take it, come here.
Okay, so, so, so history, so it's gonna be, that's the part of our, and it's gonna be outside? So, anybody, anybody? Correct, so the, the kids that wanna say, I'll be waiting.
There's a type of dispensing on it, that if you. You can't empty the machine, you can't get more than one, uh, some of them. We've got five people, kind of, the intervals, I don't know if it's a sensor or not, basically, if you dump the machine out on it. Uh, again, they, they, they have, I think, cell, or some kind of service providers, and it's low, and come out, dribble down, and cross the street. Uh, not a long-term benefit to this, is they, you know, over the county, the community, or numbers across, someone needs something that resources there, and.
Is anybody trying to sell these people?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, how do we keep that, you know, every day, when you get through your board, you go out on the street, so there's a matter, we go up here, to Sket's Street.
I don't know how Department of Health and Substance Services managing that, but those funds are a tension, personally, that they were filled, they were stocked, and we go through under the day, and I don't, I say something, or seven, or one, or three, go.
Well, and, and bringing people back before they almost die, so I wouldn't make it, get a drill, or let them think I wasn't getting spotted.
Well, there are reasons too, with, that will be so relevant, uh, so, yes, an accidental exposure, you know. I mean, able to know, yes, I have nothing, yes, it's a special, not a mine, it's an occasion, which is.
Wow, true. Oh, I mean, it's, I think, I believe, I believe, it's, I, it's hard to say, you know, I mean, it's. No, I mean.
I was, I was just gonna say, um, and it's not, like, I understand if you're concerned, but I feel like it's one of those situations, and six, everyone has this, and everyone. Um, you can't stop people from doing their various things, so, I, for, I'm grateful that we are gonna have some people in the community that, because you just don't know. Um, and, and I love that it's on the grid, um, that is a very easy career fair, and, um, to know it's there, uh, I'm happy for our citizens.
Do any other cities have this, stop?
These came out. Uh, it's, they, the last one, they're weak, so this is.
Yes, it is.
It uses a required memory of this country, to the local government, and the state. So, yes, I, I'm. I don't think, again, I don't know the raw.
That's why they're all, okay.
It's best. It's good.
Are we gonna, are we gonna notify the public?
Yes. Oh, okay. We'll have to push out on social media, we'll have to push it out, the papers.
We need to get an M O U approved, and we need to have it signed by Department of Health, before anything, before that, we need to. They're, they're doing, so, with these two, they're, multiple, they're interacting map, of where they're at, over the cable, across the metro.
I've seen buses wrapped in this. Department of Health is gonna really be, probably, push up this, I'm gonna pop up on that, maybe we should tweet out, basically, out. James, all very good, or, or, that's awesome.
I just wanna, where are you gonna, where are you gonna put it, on, our section, it says you may keep it out of the wrecked sunlight, where you don't, get sunlight, all right, that.
No, it needs some electricity, it's gonna be out. For that, you need.
Well, it says machines should not be installed in this way, wrecked sunlight.
We've got a tree over there.
I'm sure. There is, I, I'll trust them all. Don't figure it out, don't grab this, wait, that's why. I don't think, um, we'll grab it. I think. Okay, any other, any other position? I guess, you're pretty open, anyway. That's second. Question, second.
Melody.
Yay.
Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Yay.
Okay, your ten, consideration of the people, interlocal, governmental, operational agreement. For, and, and I P A, City UCOM, jail services, for resident offenders, City Co. They, they did comment on this, and then I, I think it was Sean from UCOM.
Uh, last thing that I had for you was, um, that Oklahoma County Detention Center was trying to work some things out, before they might have entered another agreement. Russell might have put some heads together, checked with whatever major deal were, and the government, City UCOM, who runs the municipal jail. Uh, we have a draft agenda, Eric, and draft idea that they sent to us, to the Senate Legal, which was hard, though, and back then, in fact, there's, there's, we've not had a finished product yet. There's nothing substantive difference in what they sent, or got, could have gotten, could have, so, it's been forty-two dollars, and, and like we mentioned, you're a resident offender. Municipal, uh, people are arrested, violently, in city, or if it's, uh, not someone's arrest, on felony, or, or, they, they, they will be in the appropriate place, and that was until they were caught. Um, that's the thing, you use this UCOM, and a couple other cities, we mentioned, four years, as well. So we have about ten, twelve arrests a year, which we can easily handle that, here's our, I P A, so back to the song. So would ask, if it is what you want to pursue, that, uh, there is a motion to prove it, we need to accept that, I P A, and, 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 these networks are permitted, therefore, it's all on, there, it's on.
Sean?
Okay, the, the only question I have, uh, instead of it starting September first, was that a retroactive?
Not, we're scared, that's just a date that we got.
Okay.
All right, that date, and we, the date that it's approved on there, and we accept that. Thank you. First of all, thank, uh, Chief Ross, for finding someplace, petition, and all this, for, um, stuff, very much, very much appreciate that. Um, I didn't know the other two cities, which was last. Cause I talked to two of the three commissioners, and, and we had met, and Sunny and I had met, if there's any way to record a bit, things here, then this is so much easier, thank you. It's, it's, I mean, so, for our, that, it's not physical, we're in the American, we go to hold this all, and we hold someone for twelve hours, but while we're here, we have to, of course. So it takes someone off, like, control off the street, so even if they take this, well, it's not, it's not that much, sure. I mean, with someone out, pocket, five, six, or seven, they're still, you know, these cities, watching, so, I think it's a good option, and, uh, UCOM, uh, I've since we get, get, we check, and they're down, so. I should, I should, City UCOM, or, even, so we should be, say, oh, we got a, a, we want, just to say, yeah, worst of all, I think, we're, we're, yeah. We've been just out before, in different locations, that, uh, we were asked some recognition there, so, uh, anyway, this is, this is gonna work out. That's, especially these two guys, they're great, and pushing for something other than, I know, and I, I appreciate all of that, for comment.
Of course, I'm, I'm, I think, I'm, I think, I'm, I'm.
I think it's a good, this point.
Okay. I was just curious, I've never, I've, I've been in UCOM, but I'm not.
I'm gonna ask Sean, if you want, I'll be, I'll be. So, how, so, and John's, so, and John's, what's that?
I think he'll, uh, because I'm, I'm, you know. One of the things, I'm, Oklahoma County, um, happy that they're doing their search for the location, uh, and, and, sorry.
Yeah. Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate you guys, that said it all, so, I just, so you can make that motion, uh, uh, Sean, maybe, I don't know, I think it will be on the margin.
Oh, yeah, uh, I'm gonna make a motion, accepting a local, government, corporation.
Okay, I'll do that. Jeff, what do you say?
Ending, city attorney's acceptance.
Okay, with the city, with the city attorney, they said, it's a new, it's a new. Ending, city attorney's acceptance. Judge approves it, we check on the, uh, so.
Got it, thank you. Okay.
Now, basically, do I have a second? I'm sorry, I'm checking, there, that, that, okay. Sean. Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Uh, yeah. Well, it's such a, it's a comfort. Okay, this is a pretty special. But I think, I think, I think, I think. What do you call that name, sir, what do you guys do?
Actually, I call it, I call it, uh, yeah. It's a new, uh, uh, uh. Definitely, uh, we're proud of it. Hey, we practice it, you know.
I, I would think that the normal, uh, you, you, you've got to, you know, not, do that. Okay, we're down to, I have number eleven, boards, correspondence, etc. Treasury Board, twenty-third, uh, twenty-three, financial report, sales, back.
Oh, we get the financial reports, P L, as soon as I get one, we're literally getting ten days off, came back fourth Friday morning, uh, and, and, nuts, and, and, so, uh, soon we get. Uh, sales chat, database recording. Early in the year for town month. But instead, it's. We're bringing this good. Thank you. By category and Sean, you asked me a question a couple of months ago, we're here for some of those and this was. And then just what that category is, there are all the numbers for similar categories, so I.
Thanks for the first, thank you.
Right, it could be one, it could be, uh, someone's depending on how relevant or how good the state is. Could be more than such, just how they're. So, I appreciate it. On the journey that I can see, we are working with Oklahoma County District One, who are coming up to Dragon Channel on Village Drive. Possible could be starting off this week. From Brickton and to Village Drive, I'm looking at four hundred Village Drive. County came up to look at it, thought they'd use their resources together, and probably spend that amount of time a month. Animal Control House is a pet adoption event at the Pet Emporium on Saturdays at ten o'clock. We've not one dog adopted, but it was. We're counting it as success. Mr. Gardens, there's still been shops on May, so. The Facebook reviews are a bit. The sidebar, if I have my business on, I have fifty thousand. And when will we be in the U? Then the vacuum project tire is the Bill of Fix, cover portion occurred, the true love, we building buildings, and cover player, and tire, and. Comes from the city, got there about fifteen years experience, and the same song. So she's been there a couple of days, we're working with her, kind of flex schedule. Got there enough to get her out of that position, but she should be on the ground by the. She'd be great fit in there, or going to the player, or she looks like. Our cover projects working, and I'm sure that Courtville, the period, the value of paying ordinance, the prosecutor, they're giving me. Last week, we had it to meet November first demo. Charlotte, the committee expects a new office, we have some people, donations from the board, to put on the. Bring back the meeting. I'm still working on the library roof, it's a new place, so we need to work on construction, we're trying to sign on the project, so we can get it bid out, so we can be very current, kind of letting in. Working with that tennis court, I'm sorry, working with Paracom and Vado, consulting on our MS4, showing our management. We did get it back to the Q G, the comments, they're helping address those, we want to get our plans submitted. We are likely to do, probably be submitted to the Q G. And we did have a confirmation back, but we're there, we say over. Got the records management policy done, starting to work on personal handbook, made that updated. Sandwalk names for the bond funding, still about ninety-five percent, we're looking at the intersection, crossing over Village Drive. Just not the safest place in the world, illegal in the current world, with the best memory of the general, that's only about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On the elements, so look, and try to make that a long-term focus, and just in short-term sidewalk, shouldn't be getting those though, you. Shouldn't get this up a bit in early October. I get the pleasure of joining the brewery next month, do their presentation for our launches, before that. The bad news is we haven't seen anyone on the Facebook, people, we have a grand ball festival this year, definitely part of the construction, our new seven hundred dollar rent center is not done yet. And regardless of what the key would like, we're trying to do it halfway. Really do not have another property available that has water and electricity, but it can come into background. We're considering this to the west of City Hall, that would be generator, so it's not offered, but everything going out, we've succeeded here for a hundred and fifty years. Free management, part of what we're doing, so look at what we're gonna do with the next event set, with the new event set. Should have been the whole day for the Christmas Employee Appreciation Day, we brought it to seven fifteen, cast in the center Friday evening. We're also working with the Shabba the Corporal Center, and they're like they're outdoor, the door, the lights on, we'll see. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, that's, that's a pretty good show. They asked me to do, it's really wonderful. So, yeah, kind of hot construction, we're finishing up here, that's work from Fontaine, Saturday morning, just in case the. Street department is picking up the jet team, requesting for this year's model. Got that a little cheap on the budget, so we're very thankful for putting down the gap in feelings. And we're getting ready to have a contract renewal with the library system, for certain, so the only change in that is they're asking us to take care of the home. They're trying to standardize all of the contracts, all of the technicalities, qualities, that's probably something. Much issue, uh, street bond project, there's what's been done, ways about how you can get out, or the street swarm, or the tour, or the game of fixing, of course it was. With building, over like, we're gonna schmuck on materials, it's not something to ride fast enough. Thought we were well past COVID, the street one. Apparently they don't, so they did take, if they pause, and a reason half the day, they've gone, that's a small project, and should be back on the night they're coming for us to pick up. So we're good for, is that done? Next one is parking all the ports. Kay said, thank you very much for running like a whole, within the building, or code. Yeah.
Somebody had a mind.
Yeah, Kay, I think Kay can try to do those adoptions part quarterly. But coworkers have done this flash print codes, they will look forward to getting that thing started back in the spring, we hear faster than we think. There's some criminal on the channel, we mentioned we're working with Oklahoma County. Fire Department. Try to put their numbers and revenue and press us. As far as safe, when it comes down, we will be testing for the base. Um, for the end of this month, I think that's lined up for the next week, that's been a long way to be processed. We'll have that filled. And the E S L report indicated that there have been a hundred and forty emergency times in the month of August. For a hundred and forty calls, a hundred, a hundred and twelve transports, average response time, eleven minutes and forty-eight seconds. And I don't know if I sent you four or four or nine, that's one. Include urgent or emergency, there are one, one category that they don't, yeah, they sent a P D up, so. So, but I have more than that, and I have the quote, I don't think we need to keep watching that as long as I don't. Police Department Deputy Chief, still retired at the end of this month. Comes in concrete chair on his last minute, can't get that to go down. But we should be getting our accreditation completed by the end of the month as well. Uh, we said the accreditation is done fifty-four years, and done by the chief association, we have the credit for twenty-two, that's not very. Police Department state is credit. Uh, I think we have two officers, we're filling the academy, we hired a, another one who is clean certified, and he started with us on Saturday.
Field training, the, the, the. That's pretty quick. I'm like, I can get those off.
Um, one we just hired was, um, the head of law enforcement, and he's clean certified, and he's working for security P C L. And this is exactly what I was. It's been for him, it's been for us, about to get off here, for our home order, and start the system.
It will be more.
It will be more. Okay. We lost one of the N C I S, the actual label sitting on TV show, one that got married, and his spouse had the dominant income in the road there, so. Chief Marret retired, so. Bob reported the passion, his lot paid, and if you think we're great, uh, if they keep it quick and smooth, without. And it's awesome, and I'm not one of the heavy element. To really start coming together every day, folks, one more than finish.
This is construction, we're, we're, I couldn't, there's no way these figures are talking today. They, they pick out the laws and stuff that, you know, you're not, only in the city, you don't pick that out, I'm gonna do so that. I'm gonna re-learn that, because down the road, if you don't pick out the small laws that turn into default, you're.
Uh, Kingsdale Intersection is open for local traffic, they must call it twenty-one, so you're not making that people drive on it. It's wrong and hard open.
Always.
Did not have a reading type of the last thing, because it was before. Any of these are on. What's, uh, right, we're looking at what to do is. The other critical center, and more, turn, you have a mixture. Going up, you know, there's lots of the problem that we. Really come together, sit down, that they just got started. Yeah, that's a lot. They just go to free, I'm sure, upon the market, I mean, you know. Actual photo, it is an actual photo, so. Now I can see the building area, the library, the. And the line said, we're on, so you don't miss anything, any information. Yep, we didn't want to do so, I hope we do, we do, we said, I'll see a lot, it stays on this to do, so.
At this point, are you seeing any signs of oil, or oil, or?
But it's looking good, I mean, there's, uh, we have one. One issue that we realized was the sidewalk intersection. Big on Penn, there's light hole there, we've got some light holes, upgraded light holes. One is kind of just a little bit too close to the center, and we're worried about making your flash around it, that's just going over the concrete around the. Budget, we're setting good on, a lot is good on that, we need to grade one. This is done, they, it's just that. Good, I wish they would have called it on, but they're. Moving on to the parking doors, uh, Daphne Park and one school, we're both coming along. It's amazing what, um. These things are the young people, they want to play equipment, where the timing from, and we're literally waiting for some fascinators to descend from. Uh, we have a hundred and eighty percent, start your city mile, the warehouse right quick, yeah, they can handle it there, so we'll start the city one on this on that.
Thank you for the question. Okay. Right, we're looking to approve all this stuff. Um, let's see, we have new business, or can I counter comments? Very. And city attorney, so we'll start with city attorney.
Really don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, we'll start with city.
Uh, well, as you guys know, Wesley left our firm first. He and their own admitted P C. Picture. Andrew Duffney. Although they were, uh, we picked that up for. Okay. Uh, we have any U R days?
I always wanted to know that. Some one, I think, you all, I'm.
There's always some, there's issues that. We're anticipating this month. So, uh, two, we, they're like. Requesting.
Yeah, at this point, I have a little, a little board about city. Okay, I think this group, so a couple of things. Then, did. First of all, the office, we challenge you about scheduling. I saw, I skipped over that, you know, like they responded, I saw it back.
You can unskip it, because, you know.
Did it bother you?
Yeah, Carrie does.
Because of the job.
The job you were with, yeah.
All right. But I said. I was gonna ask her about.
Thank you, she had employee that had emergencies, she does that covering there, and when she shared that they approved the hiring system.
Okay. But I got a question, I mean, I was just curious, I have security, it's one of the. About, I'm not sure what was happening, security staff, some other library, not our facility, but. I'm just curious, because the other thought I had was that the correct spot for one of our officers here, it's been an hour, it's a little, uh, kid. We could do some kind of meetings in that way. I don't know, I don't know what you're gonna say.
Sorry, your big worker, good.
I know, yeah, the crisis is present. Well, I mean, uh, Chief and I talked about all kind of go with the fly project, there was a way to put in a permanent desk for a lot of officers, that they were there to be present, be there, and use those to. Uh, also, there's no, I think, whatever, this is here, it's an issue. Uh, I sent an interesting article to Sean, about the rest of the world, what was that state?
Oh, I don't remember what city, like, we, we talked about.
Yeah, it is, the city somewhere kind of, one, um, they pull out their. Bus contract for Blackbird, and they do right share, but the city subsidizes through the photograph plus a month, where anybody in the city can call to Blackbird or Hoover, and they go for a dollar, they can go anywhere. Kind of the. Probably does serve a meeting, but I don't think.
Yeah. Um, two last things, we have to do, bridges. Uh, wildlife, you know, on engineering, instead of spending a couple of dollars on a bridge on Village Drive to do a pedestrian thing. We'll put it down in one lane.
That's a conversation that we're gonna have, we're moving right now on the cost. For more like something.
Well, not, not a lot, I think a lot of it is either side of the town, I've always been right there, no, on that bridge itself, it's two-way trap, it's down in one lane. So if you go across, you have to shut it down, and look at the picture, it's confusing, interesting. Six stop signs, all time, and it's, I mean, I don't think they're right, so I, I think we can do creative engineering, we've got the. Uh, the last thing I gotta read a little bit here, I followed my friend Sean Cummings. Down in California. Never been. Like this, right, I'm sure, pretty beautiful. Uh, well, the fiftieth anniversary in nineteen eighty-seven, four hundred and seventy-five hundred dollars, they had a brick. Twenty-five, a few later, we did the A D A, it's used to have, get them out of there. And you know, but they're, they're black. There you go, so I just, but I'm trying to point out, they can do it with the Golden Gate Bridge. For a second, their ears off, and where are we on that, I don't, you know. I, I can go on and on, but they, they know anything, except resting on us. It's, it's still. They do this with me, of course, all, all sorts of. Here's what I, maybe I was really with me when I was really out there, I came across that, and I was like, man, I, I was like, I kind of text Sean, and that's what I was doing there, laying lanes. Probably. But anyway, I mean, I saw that's hilarious, and they could rescue me, for example, they've been there. So what you did was more than you could, you were. They have another.
They need to need to need you. Father of a child.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that. Two. I, I.
I was too.
Straight shot. Headshot shot, we love this.
Okay.
I actually don't have any at all, I, I went and did a, like a taking comment on the park. When school is over, they get more questions back, it doesn't. We're back ordering, I, I tell you, we're back ordering. Just so you all know, when I buy from a restaurant, I can't even tell you what kind of hamburger lovers we get every week, I have to take one step. Still, this part, and Gary is an enormous proud of show. Just demonstrate. That's all I have for everybody.
Um, yeah, the only thing, uh, well, a couple of things I had, uh, I.
Yeah, the only thing, well, a couple of things I had, I did see that as well, showing about the library, some of the libraries having some issues, and the pop's kind of. I know, it's pretty quiet in there these days, you know, I've been there a few times, but I was kind of thinking about the same thing along those lines. The other thing, Dave and I were at a coffee, coffee with permission on the ninth. And I had another, something that I had already asked me before, and so I just stopped through for a little bit, and was able to actually. Visit with Carrie and Moonwork, as well as the special guest was Ligo Monson. And so it was, she had some good information that she shared prior to me having to leave, but of course, if they were, or definitely did more than to come, and I'd like to see that, so. The only other thing, well, one of the things that I was thinking about, the coffee shop, that's being the renovation from the bank. Does anyone have a point of contact with them? I was curious to, I'd like to possibly, if possible, be able to get a, you know, a visit with them, just to see, you know, I know, I don't know if y'all have a timeline, or if they're really coming along. Are you going to be dumpster stung? Because I was kind of concerned about the dumpster a couple of times, but I've never gone to anymore, because I didn't, I never saw the police. They, there was a problem a couple of times, I'm like, because I go to the law all the time, and I noticed, like, those two actors over there, kind of, and I was like, I don't know, time, time, so I don't try, I don't, I don't. Have a fear about somebody trying to, you know. Yeah, I was.
I'll get something about. Here's guys. I'm worried about, again, because. I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just. I'm thinking, the vital papers are that, they, they're shorted down, pathways, get through law, and a lot of traffic, and then those three, I mean. It's gonna be in for.
I just noticed that last night.
Yeah.
Those, I didn't know those were temporary or permanent, like. Um, because we were also on there. Coming, that's out, I didn't.
They're gonna start to, uh. There really sounds great, you know. That part's concerning, but this.
I agree.
Yes. And so, I know, you know, we talked about that. Hardwood, so.
I just say, we.
We have to see. I, you, yeah.
No, that's concerned, and I just wanted to make their feedback, you know, the community, so. And so. The Rotary presentation is going to be, uh, in thirty, in the year, I'll get it later, I just, I've always been interested in Rotary, I like, and. Have appropriate. And we, wow, my, I didn't know about, Gaddis was, Mr. Gaddis was due to, so I could see him feverishly working a couple of weeks ago, and I was wondering, do they send, like, invite sort of meeting, what, did they have a soft opening? Did you? I'm starting to try to at least make myself known to my lawyer, specifically, you know, if they want some information or they want some contacts, so. Make a personal visits, but I was just curious, I did see him working people, so, so I knew it was in the day. Well, I'm happy to, that's all, they're here for.
The publisher, they were taken on, before they were checked or scheduled, but they did, they, they, they got the S P moderation, they were on fire, fire marshal, Ken World's name, and everything done they needed to do. One, one, just assistance, one, see the register, software. They, they, they actually provided a back order, so. From Jersey, they were working, it was in that house, they were running that, they had a thing.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can't put together. We can't, every day, start to determine. And Nick, I think, said, I went to opening, Cassini schools, preschool, elementary school, I, Nick, all of them, certainly, they're all there for a long time, very nice. They treated us so well, they gave us all the compliments, and, you know, the out, out, situation of the city, and I'm hoping they'll be straight about, very definitely, of course. Other than that.
Honey, I didn't get invited.
Yes, we did, but.
But that's, that was, that was kind of.
Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you about, they, they are a good part of the captain. I didn't know about mom story, their, their, their mom story is so, so cool, I've seen a lot of lives, I've been a certain, every kid would work, and everybody was doing something, they were all tied up already. I was going to walk in and see, that one I was under, across, you know, I was actually moving that. Okay, I think, you know, everybody was moving hard, it was fine, everybody was so appreciative, and, yeah, that's great, gotta see it. Other than that, I can't, so.
I'll, I'll let you know, along those lines, I did get to visit them, because right after they had the, they said that they were, they have a sign, you know, that clearly, they, it's like, a, and they sign, they print sign, that they sit out during pickup, in the brief pickup. So that their parents know not to park on vehicles, they say no parking on vehicles, and they park on vehicles, but they did not have their sign up there to put it there, and so I walked in and visited the security, or I always visit as just the next four day you're resident. And so, but they, 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 after that, have been displaying it, haven't had an issue, so it's been going really smooth, but, yeah, that was what we had, but it's beautiful, yeah, it's, it's really nice. The loop bits kind of makes me feel like I'm in classroom in some ways, and I'm only yard for so long. But I'm getting used to it, and my, you know, so it's, it is a very tall fence, it's quite.
They've got a beautiful, built in ground, right, I did research on my own report office, but. The one thing I figured out, I was so happy about, they, they were, they started from a foundation, and they, 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 they are the one, so, that's all, I'm sure, that's, so. Nobody bought that. Yeah, nobody was like, oh, anyway, so it's, it's back in the forties, and they were, they were, they were brown, so that was, they were long, well.
Yes, and you know those, those new buildings over there, that was, I used to play soccer over there when I was, like, I've been to your school for a quarter grade, so, that would be wrong.
We're on, we're on that, is any, okay, down here, a little.
Yeah, I, I had a couple things about, I'll fill out the form before I give you the dog.
Yes, we do, this is very normal.
I'll start early, that's what I'm talking to you, there was a resident in Cassie man, who was on the living room, one or two of them, she told me this about a month ago, so they have changed since then, she's, she's watching, being out the debris and the channel behind her, behind the houses. She said they saved the risk, or, or, as far as the, it's close, or, or it turns, a living.
Okay.
So, you can bring it. The second thing, and I'm just gonna read it to you, this is kind of emotional, but I want to bring this up, I experienced a close encounter with my family guy, and he took the Austin police almost enough time, it's next to camp. Later, they come out, but this could be a problem for innocent, a police, fire department, someone else's house. I didn't speak today, but he landed, and he said they go to red links, the final next to camp, but sometimes it takes a long time. I would like to request our senior citizens, either to fill out a form, that could be on file, and this is what the days from the salt games, where you fill out, put it on the printer board, and everyone with it. If a problem occurs, or at least have the refrigerator form, which states for next weekend, the contact information, otherwise, this could be a timely chat, I'm certainly volunteering my time to help, but I try to get some help, either by the address, or lunch out, or whatever. This would be voluntary, but I would like to see, see our state consider this idea, because we do have lots of senior citizens in there. I didn't speak with Deputy Tara Hardwood, who runs the salt game, she's the coordinator, and she talks, and she said, she, she said, they use the information on your bridge, whatever, but they love to see the next camp list, and they would, if you guess, I call it driver's license, but not all of it, senior citizens drive. And then my reservations about giving out the information. Or at least they could talk to their neighbors, perhaps a plea from our senior manager, or council could get this started, appreciate and consider this idea of employing someone to protect them, it's just, because I think, I mean. There are people that don't get outside, they don't know the neighbors, and, and I don't know how to exactly know, I mean, we look up, there's almost a rock, and all, but we have a lot of older people, and if. Like, the police pick you up, a sudden die, or take you to the war, then you're gonna be, at war till they find your next camp. And she went and said, yeah, there's a problem sometimes, he said, we start digging and asking questions, but sometimes it takes a while. So just stopped my life for us to be sure, I'd love to see something done, or.
This is, this is not action, man.
Camera's been there.
Sure. There you go. Okay, this evening at five thirty, ABC News announced a report where there were three toddlers, preschool, and insane, you know, lots of them. Three toddlers in a preschool, the guidance was candy, and their lives were saying, we're going to loss them. And so I just wanted to, I didn't know that was on this agenda, I mean, that, that sort of stuff was, really stunned me, I was at preschool, but, so this is a good thing.
I did see that story as well, one of, one year old, do the pass away on that, you know, in the. What is going on with the Church's Chicken on here, behind Walgreen?
Just read it on. They rebranded it as Church's Texas Chicken.
Sounds good.
Just read it.
Is it closed? That's in. I had a funny problem, just as a joke.
I bet, it's a lot of grace.
All right.
Okay, that's all we have, thank you guys, we're all set. All we can do.
Yeah, I'm honestly busy, but I don't think I'm, October.
Okay, everybody give that, I'll make sure any of them say yes, okay, we got, okay, good.
October 2nd.
It's on the night. Okay.
We're not having a meeting on October 2nd, because our legs are ten. We don't have a meeting on the next, October 2nd, because our legs are ten. We don't have a meeting on the next, October 2nd, because our legs are ten.